...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's the game in order? Six thirty? I'll call her. Voice roll call. Joe Cowherd?
Here.
Misty Cottle?
Here.
Anita Lowery?
Here.
Jeff Upton?
Here.
Mike Nelson?
Here.
John Collins?
Here.
Kira Hungate?
Here.
Ed Stoudt?
Here.
City Attorney Tom Kicklag, City Clerk Marsha Hungate, and the Air Mayor Don Robbins. Before we start, I'd like to ask that we change the agenda. We want to move the resolution down here on new business to the first thing we do if we can so that Nick can get on out of here. We'll keep him all night. And then also would like to add, under new business, the Property Owners Association up on James Place would like to speak to us tonight. Do I have a motion to make those changes?
I'll make that motion. One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Do we have approval of minutes? Do we have a motion to accept those? Does anybody see anything in there that needs to be changed? I'll make the motion if you're ready to say yes. I'll say it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Now we come to our public forum. We have two minutes per speaker. All remarks will be addressed to the City Council and Mayor, and we may ask you questions. No official action will be taken this time. Do we have any, if anybody would like to come speak?
Is this volunteer speaking or is this?
I'm sorry?
Is this volunteer speaking or is it?
Yes.
Is it something on the agenda?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, this is for things that aren't on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Nobody? All right, then we're going to move to that Resolution 2016-9. Nick, do you want to speak on that?
Sure.
There you go. Basically, it's an amendment to the consent administrative order from ADQ. The original one was issued back in 2015, I think February 9th, and back this summertime, we have provided ADQ an update on where we stood on the project and also had requested a revision to the timeline for when all the work will be complete just because it's, you know, some of the things to fall into place were taken longer than what predecessors had originally anticipated. So we laid that new schedule out in front of ADQ, and they've accepted it and put it in the form of amendment to the CAO. So really, it doesn't change any of the terms other than just timelines. And just for frame of reference, the new final end date would be, let me see, we're showing October 27th of 2018 is when all the work would be complete. That includes finishing the sewer rehab work that's ongoing and then building the new sewer main to Fayetteville, getting that online, and then demolishing out the existing wastewater plant and having everything done, done. So they've accepted that.
To be clear on that, are we, we do this every ninety days or?
The updates too? Yeah, it's kind of funny. I found out I sent ADQ a letter because I thought I owed them a quarterly update, and I'd asked the Leslie Daniels there if, since we had the amendment, if I needed to do one and then do one the next month. And she said, yeah, go ahead. And then she called me yesterday and said, she said, why did you send me an update? I'm confused because don't you have to do the amendment? And I said, well, I thought I needed to do one. Apparently, we didn't need to do quarterly updates, but they appreciated the fact that we were showing them what progress we're doing. So I told her, I said, we'll continue to do that. I'll send her one within thirty days of this one and then just continue every three months. And they really like to see the progress. They're happy to see that work's being done, construction's underway. I told them that we're already seeing a reduction in inflow in the system and really positive input there, and she seemed to appreciate that. So, well, no, they seem happy with where we're going.
Is it fair to say that you would be under a punitive order that we're under? Because no one ever wants to be under if it's an order. We would probably get most approved authority, wouldn't we?
Yeah, that was a comment she made. Yeah, she said, for so long we didn't get a lot of response, and now you guys are really getting after it and doing things. And they understand there's things we have to go through on the process, you know, clearing things through the state and through EPA that can sometimes take longer than what we've anticipated, and that's kind of what's happened at this point. And they just appreciate the fact that there's something moving, that we're doing everything we can to get the system back to where it needs to be. And, you know, that's, so kudos to the city for taking those steps. Y'all have any questions on amendment?
I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution Number 2016-1.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Most in favor. Thank you, Nick.
All right, thank you.
Okay. At this time, we can go on to our business reports. John?
Not a whole lot to report tonight. We're excited about a few things. We're still getting a great attendance at our children's programs every Tuesday morning. We had forty-six kids last week, about thirty this week, but anyway, it's really going well. Getting the word out, we've got some moms who are sort of helping to reach out to other young moms and pre-K kids. So we're real happy with the turnout. It's just also underscored, we need a larger library because that room is not meant to accommodate forty-five people for sure. But anyway, that's a good problem to have for now. The one thing that's coming up, I assume you all have heard about, one week from tonight is the Candidates Forum at the Community Center. It's not, you know, necessarily a library event, but we're helping to promote it, and I think the friends are involved in that. And so I think we're going to get a real good turnout for it. I think it's a great thing that we should do every election year. You'll get to meet the candidates for mayor, for West Fork representative in the state legislature, and I believe the county judge, candidates, and some other people will be there. So just circle that on your calendar. I think we'll get a great turnout, and I think it'll be very worthwhile. And then the last thing is that we are excited about an author event coming up on November 3rd. Our book club, you know, reads a book every month, and they read this one last month by local authors. Pass this around. Fern Jones. About her parents during the depression, who lived on Truher Mountain, and just an incredible story. One of those things that always wonder why they didn't assign books like this in school, you know, about things about your area that are, you know, it's well-written, it's a great story, and it would seem a lot more relevant to your lives and some of the things that we got assigned instead. But anyway, if anybody wants to borrow that and read it, it's a great read. Just get your hankies ready because there are some moments that'll turn you inside out. But Fern Jones, the daughter of the woman who wrote that, will be appearing and talking about the book, and there'll be copies available if you're interested. She's a wonderful person. I think she's about, she's in her eighties, but she's very lively, and she'll be a lot of fun.
John, when is that going to be?
It'll be at Library Hall, I wonder if they're at. That is a Thursday, I believe. That's a good question. Let's see. I think it's going to be around five o'clock. I'm thinking five o'clock. That's a Thursday night. Otherwise, everything's going well. Any questions for me? Anybody want to borrow the book?
I do.
Oh, yeah, good. You got one taken. I'll write your name down.
I'll take the other one.
Okay, great. I think you'll.
Finney has the rest, y'all want it. Go ahead. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Hi. What? I mean, it's in the budget because we didn't have a video copy for the full year.
Is that what she's asking? Justice, I'm going to ask.
Is there any reason why we can't?
Nope.
I mean, that's going to be good. I mean, good. Make sure he's available. The ones you can't find, they're able to watch.
That'd be good. I'll be all right with that.
I spoke to Justin. I think he's available and willing to do it if y'all so choose.
You want to make that motion?
Oh, just to make a.
Well, that way even Kristy pays for it. There'll be a little motion in minutes.
I'll make the motion to fill the candidate form. What is it?
Misty, use ticket.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Paula? She busy right now? Chief Watts?
Yeah. Keep this kind of short and sweet. If you wanted to look through your packet, we had one hundred and forty-four calls of service, six town reports. We issued thirty-eight citations, three felony on-veh arrests, nine misdemeanor arrests. We dealt with six property complaints. Let's see. We've got a rifle class going on right now. John came out this morning, checked things out there. So I'm a little sunburned, a little tired to run down from that. But we've got four of our guys in there, and we will turn a profit off of it this year. That'll go towards the police department. Also, we just announced this at our workshop, we're approved for a grant for our in-car computers, and so that money will be on its way here shortly. So other than that, I am open for questions. We'll go from there.
What date are you doing the shop with the cops this year?
I don't know yet. I haven't set a date just yet, so.
West Fest, we need to get you some money.
Okay, I'll get with the school, coordinate that stuff. I don't have that.
Public Works Director. Isaac.
I don't have just a whole lot. I'm still getting settled in. I do have a pre-construction meeting Thursday morning with the State Highway Department on the overlay project, so hopefully we can get the ball rolling on those fairly quickly. So as far as water, I got a meeting tomorrow with Metron meters. We've been having some trouble with them. I think we got forty in service, and when we get the five that are down replaced, we will have replaced twelve of them. So we're going to sit down and talk to them and hopefully get a solution to that problem. And other than that, I don't have anything else.
Thanks, Isaac. Parks Director.
I don't have a whole lot either. Couple of things from our minutes I did want to point out. One, myself and the Parks Committee are going to start working on reviewing our regulations and our rules for the parks. This kind of came up because in the, well, they were established quite some time ago, but there's still some wording in there that relates to the Parks Commission, which is no longer what we have now. We're switching it to the committee. So that's what started looking at some of that. But while we're at it, we want to take a look at our rules and see if there's anything that needs to be added or adjusted or amended along the way. So we're going to be working on that and hopefully have a new set of rules to bring to y'all to look over and approve it sometime in the next, hopefully, couple of months, probably. And then also, I just want to let you know that we do have an opening on our Parks Committee. Isaac, due to his new position at the city, has resigned from the Parks Committee. I think he's got it. He says he's busy, I don't know.
Excuse me.
Yeah. So we do have an opening. We will, right now, we're taking applications until the twentieth. We need again on the twenty-fourth, I think, to review those, and then the committee will possibly select a new member at that meeting, or they could choose to put it off also. So we do have an open position on our committee. That's about it. We got a lot more on, but most of the minutes. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Myers?
Well, might as well pause us, too. I don't have a lot either. Thank goodness. It's a busy month, fire preparedness month at the schools. We either have a class coming to us, or we're going to one somewhere to school or daycare about every day this month. So today is the opening day of one of the largest grants that we can apply for. We're going to start on that. We do next month. Keep our fingers crossed, and we'll get enough money to finish off our turnout here. So other than that, that's all I've got.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I've had several people ask me, call in and asking us, so are you going to do the codes for kids?
Yes.
Bet you do.
Oh, definitely. You bet.
Thank you.
You're a model of participation, you're any guy.
Okay. Thank you.
Kristy?
The only thing I really want to point out is that we did write the $153,000 check to the Highway Department this last month, and that's for our part of the overlay project. So that has decreased our reserves considerably. We're down to around $865,000. So just something we need to keep in mind, we obviously want to start building that back up as we can. So that's the only thing that's unusual, I would say, about the finances. If you guys have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Do you want me to go ahead and talk about the next? Go ahead. Do you have a question? Okay. The next item is the Riverside Park Grant. We talked about this a little bit at Budget Workshop. The grant that we got down there to do the new extension, we submitted our first reimbursement request. It was for $48,000. Eighteen thousand, nine hundred of that was unallowed because the process was not done properly. So because of that, we've only used about $14,000 of the $32,000 that the grant will pay for. So at this point, we have about two months to get the project complete. We still have to put in two gardens and a couple of benches, and then get the paperwork to the state and allow them time to get up here and look at it and close off on the grant before December 31st. So today, Isaac Chad and I met down at the park with Jane Bryant, which is one of the master gardeners, and Jennifer Ogil, which works for Beaver Watershed, talked to them about the different plants in the area where we might want the gardens. They're going to get a list. When a garden has to be a butterfly garden, so there's specific plants to that, they're going to get us a list of flowers and appropriate things to plant down there, and try to get us somewhat of a plan that we can take to a professional landscaper to get in there and get it done. Kind of where we stand, we basically have, in order to use up part of or most of the grant, we need to spend about another $36,000. Now, we're only going to get reimbursed half of what we spend. Some of that can be in-kind, but we don't have a lot of in-kind left. We are going to be putting some field dirt down there and leveling off some places and all that. We can use that time and equipment and dirt. We can use that as in-kind, but as far as that really adding up to money, that doesn't add up to a lot. So I guess at this point, what I really need from the council is for you guys to give me an amount. We don't want to get a $62,000 grant or $65,000 grant and spend $15,000 of it because then we'll have a hard time getting those grants again. So we want to spend some more to be able to keep us from being disqualified for grants in the future. But I need basically a guideline of how much money you guys want us to spend. And basically, we have to spend double what we plan to be reimbursed.
If we want to get this grant in the future, we probably should spend three-quarters. By the way, it's three-quarters. If you spend under that, they'll look at your figure next time, and you'll be moved down in order of merit. So we want to shot at the grant the next time around. It's pretty close, though. I mean, if we turn the plans, do you sick someone on it? Allow, what, two weeks for the state to inspect? So a week?
We have to move quick, and we're, the two ladies that we dealt with today, they're trying to get something together very quickly for us so we can call landscapers. We have to get at least three verbal quotes from landscapers. Assuming that we're going to spend over $5,000 on landscaping, on a professional landscaper, we have to have at least three verbal quotes on that. So, and I have no idea if we're talking $5,000 or $10,000 to bring someone in. I don't know. I know the benches.
But it will be cheap.
No, the benches that we've looked at are anywhere between $500 and $1,000, just depending on the size, and we need to get a minimum of two of those. And it's just up to the council and what you guys feel comfortable with. If you want to say no more than $20,000, no more than $36,000, however you guys want to do it, that's fine. It will give us kind of a guideline to know if those verbal quotes are within our reach without having to come back next month and being, it'll be too late by next month. So get approval for the amount to get started by the meeting next month. We're going to hope the gardens are at least underway, if not complete.
Well, if we wanted to do three-quarters of it, that's $27,000 that we would have to okay to spend, and then we would be reimbursed thirteen-five of it.
So you were rounding off to thirty or something? No more than thirty?
That would be okay with me.
Yes.
No, just kidding.
I'll make a motion to spend no more than thirty.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Most agree.
And I thought if someone else did.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay. And while I'm standing up here, the next one, you're going to update on the bank, and I'll let you talk about where you guys are on demo and stuff. But the one thing, and we discussed this in the budget meeting also, was moving forward with borrowing $300,000, although that, we are going to try very hard not to spend that much to go ahead and do that. So I would like to get a motion for that so I can go ahead and get with Bo Stevens and get paperwork moving on that.
Are you ready? No. Who heard that from me? All opposed? How you made that motion? What is that motion?
For the $300, what was it, Dr. Lott?
Emotion.
No more than.
Oh, which, for which one?
This one.
$300,000.
$300,000 even?
Tomorrow, $300,000.
And your second?
Misty.
Thank you.
With Amendment 78, short-term.
Amendment 78.
Joe, you want to address that, tell them where we are on our.
Full of volunteers has fallen in, and we've gotten most of the masonry walls out. They're coming out. The rest will be completed tomorrow. The power has been safely shut down. A lot of the lights that are reusable have been taken out, possibly to be reused by the fire department. By the end of the week, we should have the rest of the grid out. The demo essentially minus some trash haulout will be complete, and it'll be ready for the next iteration of the building. One of the three top roofers in the area, Franklin Sons, met me on site yesterday to look at the old rubber roof, the EPM roof, and it's not possible to patch what's there. There are two leaks in it, one over on the west side and one back in the northeast corner. He forwarded a figure. I sent it to Kristy. She'll send it around. Put a new TPO roof on it with a fifteen-year guarantee, will be a little under $23,000. He recommended putting a new roof on it because of the age of the rubber up top. We were doubtful we could get a warranty on any of the patching. It's in fairly good shape, but it does need a new roof, and that also includes the parapet metal around all of the roof, and that will seal it off top, which was lower than I thought it would be, but it might have something to do with the time of the year because honestly, I thought a TPO roof would be probably more than $10,000, but it is a small building. His figure will be good for a while. We'll re-quote it whenever we need to, and we can get some alternate quotes from Roberts McNutt or Harness if we want comparison cost on a TPO roof.
We'll probably have to.
But I wanted to do that to see, because we, that was one of the reasons why we, I think, at least in my mind, why we went up to $300 was the ambiguity and uncertainty about the roof. So I think once, once we get the drawings pushed around and get a bit out, I think we'll realize we're not going to spend that much.
Any questions? That's all we need on that. We passed that.
Sure.
We can go on to new business now. The Property Owners Association from James. Andy told me your name, and I'm sorry, I didn't write it down.
My name is Johnny Harden. Saw a pair of the Harden Hotels, but not came through. Don't know if that was Ken Pope or not. Thanks to the mayor and the council for listening to us for a few minutes tonight, and I'll try to make it as quickly as possible, go through a few things that the property owners. I would like to hand you some handouts that I printed up and some pictures you guys can pass them around, and then I will go through them with you. Again, my name is Johnny Harden. I live at 815 James Place, and I've been there for about eight years. I've become acquainted with some of the residents there, and I've been asked to present on behalf of all of the homeowners. And if you look at the handout, I'll just kind of go through it as it's written. The Homeowners Association of Woodlands Subdivision, West Fork, Arkansas, would like to address the City Council concerning the street James Place and the West Fork City Limits. The Woodlands Subdivision was established 2001, and I think the first house was built that year, and those residents that built that house still live in that house, and most of the other residents have been there at least eight to 12 years. There's currently fifteen homes that utilize James Place on a daily basis, and most of the families have more than one vehicle, even two or three vehicles. So there's a lot of traffic up and down that road, running kids to school, going to work, back and forth to the store, that kind of stuff, a lot of traffic. The street. The street currently consists of gravel, and we want to thank the city for, when we turned the road over to the city two, three years ago, I want to thank you guys for putting the gravel on it. It is a big improvement from what it was before. We, the Homeowners Association of Woodlands Subdivision, hereby petition the city of West Fork to start preparation to pave the street James Place as soon as possible, and unless some owners' concerns, observations, and reasons why. Number one, the city recently missed a grant, if I understand it correctly, of $250,000 because the road was not ready to be paved. It had certain guidelines in order to receive this grant, and it didn't meet the standards. Two, preparing the road for pavement would allow the city to file for the grant again, and will more likely be able to receive it if we file for it again. Number three, now these figures may be different since we've got these figures, there's $321,000 in the street reserve fund currently, and a possible $150,000 to be added to the fund next year, which would be, could be partially used to start the improvements on James Place. Number four, paving the road would most likely increase the property values of the homes on James Place, thus resulting in more city taxes. Number five, paving the road would make it more appealing for new homes to be built on the vacant lots on James Place, which would also generate more city taxes. Number six, paving the street would ensure little or no maintenance for the city for the next 15 years or so. Number seven, paving the road would eliminate a massive amount of dust created by the heavy traffic on that street. And if you would have went by there sometime this summer, you would have seen those trees, 30 feet tall trees there, just white because of the dust. And the dust, you turn on your AC and your heating in your house, and it just, and it just pulls that dust through your house. You can't keep your house clean, can't keep your car clean. Number eight, paving would greatly extend the life of the vehicles of the residents on James Place. Again, the dust, the dirt, the water, the stuff, the sludge that's created when it rains, and the dust is created whenever it's dry. So either way, it causes a problem for the residents there. So, that all being said, we, the Homeowners Association, would like to petition, this petition to be included in the minutes, and would request that the city respond to our request within the next 30 days, if at all possible. Again, we, most of the people have lived there, and I know you guys know more about the city finances than I do. You guys know what's available or what the possibilities are. We ask you guys to explore every avenue possible to see if we can at least begin work on it to get it ready for pavement. And then maybe next year, when it's time to file for all these grants, we can file for that and maybe win that $250,000 to pave that street with, so all your help would be greatly appreciated. Any questions?
I would like to say that the $250,000 grant probably won't be available for a couple of years. They said that we probably wouldn't get, maybe every three years, be able to get any money. So that does give us time to work on it and...
Absolutely.
And see what we can do to get it up into a shape where we might be able to pay.
That's all we ask, is at least start preparation, let's see something happen where it can be ready. And whenever we can, the grant is available, then we can file for it again, and if it's ready, then there'd be no reason to take it, turn us down on second go-around. Thank you for your time.
What all would have to be done to make it ready?
Well, I'm not real sure. I just know that there are, there are certain parameters that have to be met. One is a 30-foot wide pavement. Wasn't it 30 feet or 26?
32.
I would have to look, it's in the website that the state, you know, they told us about the website anyway, but...
Well, I mean, I wasn't on the council when we took that over, but I was an employee here, and I was at the meeting that said we was going to take it over at no cost to the city to keep it up. And within that first month, we put 57 loads of SB2 on it. So I know that wasn't donated. I mean, we have spent quite a bit of money on that. But I, I mean, I don't know what it would cost.
Well, I know that the state said if it were up to specs, that that $250,000 would do about a mile of pavement.
And that's not quite a mile, I don't think.
But, that being said, even this year, if had we gotten that $250,000 grant, it wouldn't have paved your street alone, it would have paved partial on several different streets. So, I mean, even if we get a grant in a couple of years, and we have these streets ready, with some of them, we could never do. McKean-Roberts, there's no way it would ever meet any of the state criteria. There's no way. So, I mean, as far as paving it, the only thing we might be able to do is, is we could pay somebody to do a chip seal on it or something like that. But it would never meet state guidelines to get any state money to do it. And there's a couple others that are too narrow, and the property owners don't want to turn over any property, so we can't work with them either. So, I mean, you know, there's no way to do pavement on that. This particular road, I think that we could get it to that point. Of course, I want to see, you know, an estimate of what it will cost and all that, and if it's something we can afford to do and we do it over a period of time, that'd be great. I mean, we can't go in there and guarantee him that we're going to go in there and, you know, next month have it ready to pave and keep it that way until the state can come do it. But we can look at it, and we will look at it, and we'll see what we can do as far as getting it over a period of time, getting it up to specs.
We'd love you guys to come in and pave it tomorrow, no doubt about it. The whole, the whole city of West Fork, I mean, most of the folks here have a paved street that they live on, so if you've ever lived on a dirt road, you understand our concerns. And that's all we ask, is that you, you at least explore it and try to start working to get it ready so we can possibly get that grant next time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I want to remind you all, too, that we will have a special meeting on the 26th of October to approve the bond purchasing agreement.
Usual time?
Yes. Yes, 6:30. Put that on your calendar. And this property tax levy?
It's in the packet. It's basically a technicality that we have to do every year for the county. They need us to make a motion and approve it. It's to levy five mils for property tax, and it goes into our general fund. It's just a requirement that we have to review every year.
Even if we don't want to?
If you want property tax, you want it.
Oh, but we, okay, we do want to. So what, we just need a, some motion?
To agree the five mils.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Motion carries. Wow, looks like that's it. I have a motion to adjourn.